Good evening, everyone. We will call a special city council meeting to order for February 10, 2014. First order of business is the roll call.
Estes, Peterson, Lewis, Doyle, Wright, Scott, Nordstrom, Roberts, Clayton, Lorente. We have Quorum.
Next will be our invocation. We do not have an imicator tonight, so we will simply have a moment of silence. You're welcome to participate, but not required, and right after that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a moment, we will be hearing from Roger Brooks, and he will be giving us a presentation. I will introduce him in just a moment, but first I want to talk about the format of tonight's agenda. Is Roger will be giving approximately a half hour or so a presentation. At the completion of his presentation, we will go through the speaker request forms, and I have probably about nine or 10 speaker request forms so far, and if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to file one. We will go through all the speaker request forms. Roger has a good memory, and he also has pen and paper to take down the comments, and then he will, he will address the concerns as best he can if he feels that there are issues that he can address. After that, we will then close public comment and go to the council for a discussion. There will not be action tonight. There is an action item pending this week, and that will be on Wednesday afternoon's Legal and Finance Committee Agenda. That's at 12:30 on Wednesday afternoon, February 12th? February 12th, Legal and Finance, at 12, at 12:30 PM, and the summer nights event permit will be on that agenda. So again, there will not be, there will be discussion tonight, there will be discussion night, but there will not be final action on anything tonight. But we do value your input, and we look forward to a good conversation tonight. So what? I don't think so. Roger Brooks lives by the motto, "Nothing great was ever achieved without enthusiasm." And that's not his quote, that's Ralph Waldo Emerson. For more than 30 years, he has helped transform ordinary places into extraordinary destinations, including downtown Rapid City. He worked with, he's worked with 1,000 communities around the world, guiding them in branding, marketing, and product development efforts. He's the author of the book, Your Town, A Destination, and a U.S. Travel Association Board Member. Roger is a well-known thought leader and a change agent, energizing communities into action. He's all about making something happen. Here to share his enthusiasm with us, Roger Brooks. Sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's good to be back. You know, first of all, it was a great warm welcome yesterday when I flew into Rapid City. It was five degrees out, and there was no water at the airport.[250.12][250.12](Laughter). Needless to say, the toilets were a little bit on the other side, but I was glad to see this afternoon that the weather was triple the temperature. It got clear up to 15. And, but it's been great to be back, and you know, the last time I spoke publicly here was probably, I can't remember when we did the plan, five, six, seven years ago. I actually had a few more hairs those days than I have now, but it's great to be back again. So we're going to go ahead and start the presentation. I think we're going to dim some lights, and, and I put together this, trying to go through the process we went through. So we'll try to get that ready, and here we come. And are you able to see these up there? I want to make sure, okay, I want to see you see. So, so this is what we are charged to do, should summer ni, this is the question we were to answer. Should summer nights continue? If so, where, when, how, what can we do to make it work? If that's the case. And I wanted to start with some background, and thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. And like you said, I've worked in 1,000 cities. We've worked in 45 states, every Canadian province. We do a lot of work in Western Europe, Scandinavia, and in the Caribbean. I travel, I'm on the road about 250 days a year, and so we've been down this rodeo when it comes to special events before. And so I want to go through this, and one thing we did for two months is we went out and found every single city that ranged between 20,000 people and a million people that held weekday events on the street across the United States and Canada. We could only find 40. And what we did is we surveyed them, and by the way, these couldn't be in parking lots, they couldn't be in parks, they had to be things that were street events during the week, so it couldn't be weekend. So we found 40 of those. Sorry about the feedback, and maybe I talked too loud, but, so we found those. We did find 12 of them that hosted, that actually moved their events from their streets in downtown to a local park. And what we found is that 10 of the 12 died within three years. It's telling you straight out. 10 of the 12 died when they took it away from their downtown. Okay? And 24 were on weekdays, and they said they wouldn't think of ever changing it from a weekday to a weekend. And then the others all said it was a major revitalization effort for their downtown. So that was the 40 that we surveyed, other communities that do similar type events. By the way, not all of them were exactly like yours, some of them were public markets, and almost, and all of them, by the way, did run into the evening hours. So it was kind of, we wanted to find something that was pretty close to what you're doing here. Then what happened is, I was here a couple of months ago, and over a day, I, we interviewed more than 40 people. We were in destination Rapid Cities, and we had different groups of people come in. We had several emails, I had some phone conversations, so we also interviewed those. And then, then the Rapid City Downtown Association actually surveyed people, and they surveyed nearly every merchant on Main Street did weigh in, and 2/3 of those were supportive of summer nights. They also asked the people on St. Joe, St. Joseph Street to also weigh in, and only seven businesses weighed in, and 2/3 of those were against the event. So only two were for it, out of the seven. Now, this is not a major scientific study, and the two questions that were posed was, has some, has summer nights helped your business? And number two, do you think it should continue? And one thing that came up very loud and clear in all of this, there was a lot of NIMBYs, "We love summer nights, but I don't want it on my street." So people on Main said, "Could you move it to St. Joe?" People on St. Joe said, "Could you move it on Main?" Or "Could you move it on Kansas City?" Or somewhere else. So there was some of that. And so, you know, the ability to create a consensus among everyone was absolutely nil. There is no way we could come up with a recommendation that's going to make everybody happy. Period. And I think you've been trying to do this, this is why you have somebody from the outside to come in here and tell you, make the recommendation for you. And we heard that a lot, you know, "Good luck with that." And so, and so everything that you're going to see, we did on a series of compromises. And this is our recommendations. So here you go. And I have 12 different items we're going to go through. Number one is, summer nights is absolutely worth keeping. As a matter of fact, having worked in 1,000 cities, I could probably name 950 of them that would love to have your summer nights. I mean, it is one of the best in having, remember, we've worked in 45 of 50 states, we've spent time in all of them, and virtually everyone would love to have a community event like this. That's about community, not just tourism. I mean, this is something they would die for. And so, here's why it's worth keeping. Number one, we heard this a lot, I have never been to an event where I have genuinely just as much fun as my grandkids. By the way, we went and looked at Facebook, we looked at Twitter, we looked everywhere on social media, see what people said about summer nights. So now we're talking about attendees more than businesses. Number two, it creates a great connection to your, your base here, and those volunteer opportunities. It brings them into downtown Rapid City. Number three, it created a new sense, a renewed sense of volunturism because, you know, or volunteerism. I call it volunturism a lot because I came from that, come from that industry, but it's, this is a volunteer event. And then number four, you know, and so things like this are just great. I mean, I actually use pitchers like this all the time. It returns about $25,000 to other local organizations. That's great. So it creates revenues that give back. And number five, you know what, there's a lot of people, a lot of your merchants says, you know, "It doesn't do anything for my business, but I'm glad it's here." But I'll tell you an example is, I came here two years ago as a visitor. My wife and I did the Great American Road Trip. And, and by the way, we're from Seattle, the Super Bowl championship city.[666.12][666.12](Laughter). Am I in Broncos territory or something here? No, anyway. But we drove out to Rapid City. Now, a couple of things happened is, we got here, and we just happened to be here during the summer, and on a Sunday morning at 10 o'clock, there was a car show right on Main Street. So you know that, and I don't know what the show's called, but that was going on. What happened is, when we were here, we did not, why are we here looking at all the cars and everything? But what we noticed were a couple of restaurants. We noticed Botticelli's, and we noticed Firehouse Brewing. And you know, even though we did not eat there, we saw them as visitors, and we came back and ate there. So I have a feeling, a lot of times, they said, "I had no idea you had a store like that." So for some of these merchants, they say, "Well, it doesn't do anything for me, they're not coming to my store." But you know what? You have 10,000 to 15,000 people that now know you exist. And so sometimes that will translate to later business, because now they know you have something in your downtown. And that's 20% of your population. Number six, it brings 10,000 potential customers. You know, why do you think that malls bring in circuses? You know where they bring in the, all of the pinball machines, and they bring in the Ferris wheel, and they bring in all the rides? And you would think, well, why would they do it in the mall? Because people are there at those Ferris wheels, they don't say, "Oh, wow, we're here, let's go in the mall." But you know what? It gets them, it connects them to the mall. That's why malls put those in those parking lots. So doing this in downtown brings these people to your downtown. As a matter of fact, one thing that was interesting is, when we came here that, two years ago during the summer, we were here a Sunday through Wednesday. Thursday, we had to go home, but Thursday morning, we were staying at the Hilton Garden Inn. And we were sitting there eating breakfast at the Hilton Garden Inn, and the, and the general manager came in and was going around the table saying, "Hey, are you going to be here tonight? Are you going to be here tonight? This is Thursday morning." And I said, "Unfortunately, we have to go," and I said, "Why?" She had no clue who we were. She said, "Because on Thursday nights, we have this most, the most awesomest event in the Black Hills. It's called summer nights." She was selling their guests. And you know what was interesting? Most of the people sitting around these tables didn't even know you had a downtown, because you have never done one of my top recommendations, which is putting in a wayfinding system. You keep saying, "We're waiting for Mount Rushmore to get done." Forget it, do it. Because you do not connect. But it was so interesting that if you can start bringing in your visitors to this, it's great. And then your youth learn leadership, responsibility, and the importance of giving back. And then number eight, the music adds culture to downtown Rapid City. People like that. They like cultural depth. And number nine, it's a community celebration. You don't know how many people we saw that posted things like, "Man, I hadn't seen my neighbor for six months," and it's this genuine way for people in Rapid City to connect with each other. And then finally, the last one, summer nights gives visitors an institutional reason to spend more time and money downtown. And if your hotels start promoting summer nights, you know what the deal is? We go where your neighbors go. We go where you go. And it's fun. And so, number two, we think it be, it needs to exist. Number two, we believe it needs to be downtown. Flat out. And let me tell you something about what we did, and just to give you some background. I do a workshop all over that talks about the 20 ingredients on outstanding downtown. And what I wanted to back up is, after World War II, people lived in downtowns, and after World War II is when the first term suburbs came to being. After World War II, there was this new sense of vibrancy and everything. People started to move away from the core downtowns. As a matter of fact, we started building these little subdivisions like this in the late 40s and in the early 50s. If you ever saw It's a Wonderful Life, you know the Frank Camper where they built Bailey Park? This was in 1946. And there they were, going to the martinis, had their little house. This was the future. And so what happened is, people started moving to the suburbs, and the malls went with them. So those JCPenney's and Woolworth Stores and Sears, which you had downtown, went away. They moved to the suburbs. And that is when everything started to happen and go downtown, or go out to the suburbs. And so, then there was the proliferation of strip malls. As people were commuting in from the suburbs, then it gave, gave, this started happening. And I think strip malls are the bane of the United States. And so we started to happen that, and that was the slow death of downtowns. So that's how this happened. And then in the 70s, people said, "Well, man, if we could just close off the streets to vehicular traffic, that'll bring people downtown." Didn't work. Then we started doing things in the early 70s about closing, "Oh, let's do one-way streets and one-way the other way." You know why that happened? It's because we say, "Man, we, we have all these people going down Main Street, and they're not going down St. Joe." So there was this thing that said, "Well, if we can make everybody go down Main Street one way, and then St. Joe the other way, it's going to revitalize St. Joseph." That, they tried to do that across the country, it didn't work. It still doesn't work. I'm going to talk more about that. You know, and, and so you end up with these huge wide boulevards like this. Well, I'm going to talk more about that. And just so you know, there are twice as many vacancies downtowns than in other neighborhood retail areas across the country. And so, everything changed. But now we're moving to the European standard. We are staying open later at night. We are, as Americans, in Europe, the average person eats dinner at 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock at night. Their shops might close in the middle of the afternoon for two hours, and we are starting to shop later at night, we're starting to eat later at night, we want things to do after work. And so we are moving to the European standard. We're a baby country here, and we want plaza areas, we want these places. That's what came, that's where Main Street Square came from. And so that's what's happening is, and these squares have to be monetized. They can't just be public places, they have to be programmed, exactly what you've done in Main Street Square, which, by the way, I showcase everywhere I go, your job with Main Street Square. I think it sets the standard for cities everywhere. But that's what's happening across the country. We want those entertainments. And so those are the kind of things. And here's a big statistic for all your retails right here. 70% of all consumer bricks and mortar spending now takes place after 6:00 PM, are you open? That is a big statistic. Here's the scoop, even for tourism, you have 4 million visitors a year. I called Rapid City the hole in the middle of the donut. Because you have 4 million people here, they stay in your hotels, they get up in the morning, where they head? Crazy Horse, Custer State Park, Mount Rushmore, Badlands, Sturgis, Deadwood, Badlands National Park, the Black Hills. Then they come back at the end of the day, and guess what? You're closed. And so, you know, and we want out of our cars in a pedestrian-friendly setting. For the first time ever in the United States, we want that kind of a European type of experience. The future of downtowns is where we go after working on weekends. The days of going downtown to buy socks and underwear unfortunately are over. That's what malls are for, or Walmart, or wherever. That is the future of downtowns. And we are now in the age of third places. The first place is the place we live, it's our home. The second place is the place we work, and the third place is the place we go to hang out. Starbucks built an entire brand around third places. And that's what Main Street Square is, but it has to be more than that. And so that's why it's changing. And now downtowns are back. People want downtowns more than ever before. As a matter of fact, during the recession, the condos and things that were in downtown did, they had 1/3 the impact of foreclosures and stuff in, out in the suburbs. People want to be downtowns. They want to live there, they want to stay there. And downtowns are back more than ever before. So we went out, and we surveyed 400 successful downtowns in the U.S. and Canada, big and small. And we found the 20 most common ingredients, and I'm not going to go through all the 20 ingredients. But what we found out is the heart and soul of every community besides its people is its downtown. Period. If you want site selectors, come in here for non-tourism economic development, you know what they do? They drive right down your Main Street, and the vibrancy of your downtown tells you the vibrancy of the community. And then if you don't hang out in your downtown, neither will these 4 million visitors you have coming here. And by the way, the number one activity of visitors in the world is shopping, dining, and entertainment in a pedestrian-friendly setting. That is where 80% of all non-lodging spending takes place. You know, when we came here five or six years ago to do this, you know who we did that for? Was for Michelle and your convention visitors barrel. And you may say, "Well, Roger, if you're doing this for them, why did you focus on downtown?" Because I want you to get that 80%. It's being spent in Hill City, Keystone, it's somewhere else. Why do you think Disney put downtown Disney outside each of its parks? To get that 80%. That's what drove Main Street Square. And so there you go. They go wherever you go. Number three, we looked at everything. We decided you cannot put summer nights into a parking lot. It is a street fair. We looked at this. This is down on St. Joe between 5th and 6th. I think the city owns this lot. We looked at the lot, there's a lot of power lines that are overhead that would just wreak havoc. I came from the concert industry. That just worked, there's lots of trip hazards, but we thought, "Could we stage the whole thing in that parking lot?" It just doesn't work. So we looked at that. We even looked at, "Could we do that? And go close off one block to St. Joe? Could we put it there?" I mean, we looked at everything. Could we do this and close off that? I mean, we tried every kind of configuration. We even went on the other side of Mount Rushmore, going down Main Street, said, "Could we put it clear over there?" I mean, we looked at everything. We thought, "Well, could we put it right here?" And I figured that First National Bank might not like that. You know, because we wrapped them in there. And then I thought, "Well, could we do it like this, where we, you know, do all of this?" And then, but then we found out Assurant actually has people that work till 7:00 at night, so we couldn't commandeer their parking lot. I mean, we looked at every single possible scenario we could come up with to try to find something that would work. Oh, and then we even, let me go back. Let me go back. Where is it? There we go. See this little space right up here? I don't know if you can see it, the little blue area up to your right? That is between 6th and 5th where the rail tracks are. We even looked at, "Could we somehow pave this and actually make a thoroughfare?" Because one thing we're worried about transit, how does transit get down through here? Rapid City Transit get through here? So we looked at things like that. We looked at turning these into two-way streets. We looked at way beyond just where could it be staged. I mean, we really dug deep. And so, number four, we thought it also needs to remain on Thursdays. We looked at Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and we could not figure out a better day of the week. It kicks off your weekend on a Thursday evening, gets people prepped and everything for Friday, and Saturday, and Sunday. It really extends your weekend. And so we thought Thursday night is perfect. You know, I mean, it just would help drive people, a lot of times for people, Thursdays are paydays. You know, we also bring 10,000 people downtown on an otherwise slower retail night. And then number three, weekends are now three days long, not two, when you do this. Granted, we still have to go to work Friday, but that's what it does. And then number five, we thought it needed to be on Main Street. So here's where, here's where the controversy is going to start. And so let me show you what our recommendation is. Number one, we thought that those streets would be closed. So what you're seeing here, so let me keep going on this. And one thing we did here, and so what you see is, you see Main Street Square on the right, and you see Main Street closed basically from the Assurant egress on Main Street, and then you can see this right next to First National Bank, but not behind First National Bank, and down 7th. This is our recommend, notice where the stage is. The stage is right next to First National Bank. It's facing south. We looked at, "Could you put the stage on Main Street facing this way?" Well, then people will be looking into the sun. I mean, we looked at putting the stage down on St. Joe, down on St. Joe and 7th facing north. We looked at all these different things, and we thought, "Man, if we could create a bookend of Main Street Square, so it's not they're doing their event, we're doing our event, this is one event." And I'll get more into this. And so we said, so our suggestion, you put it there. By putting it right there, number one is, is, let's see, right there, it still creates traffic to the Alex. So to, so what happens is, you can see the little blue lines there, so it does route people down Main, and they can come down 6th, and so they, because I know that the Alex has some buses, tour bus stuff that come here, it still gives them access, and it still gets them to drive right past Main Street Square. And by the way, this is a Google map image you can see when it was under construction. So we can't wait for them to take new pictures. But, so it still leaves that part of Main Street open right there. And then the next thing is, it, this still allows access into the Assurant parking lot from Rapid Street up there. So they still have access. It also provides access to the bank's drive-through, and they still have access to their parking lot and this alleyway. And the other thing that did is, it also allows Assurant to get out on Main Street so they can get out, because they do have people that work till 7:00. So it gives them all access. The other thing it does is, let's see, what do I have here? Oh, we also, we said, "What could we do where there's parking within a block?" And so you can see there's parking there, of course, right next to Main Street Square, and there's parking over there, right here, City Hall, and then there's parking, and some of these I know are privately owned, but there was far more available parking closer to Main than there is closer to St. Joe, other than the lot down at the bottom of your screen. So there was easier access all along Main within a block to get access to Main. And so here's the other thing, this is a series of compromises. So here's our deal, is that Main Street would not be closed until 3:00. Not 2:00, not 1:30, 3:00. So we pushed Sandy and the crew to say, "Can you, I mean, another hour?" And so this is a serious compromise. Everybody has to give something. And so I said, "Can you leave this open until 3:00?" So rather than 2:00. Okay? That means they got to work a lot harder, because now they have two and a half hours to set this whole thing up. And then, and then with Main Street Square, they would close off 6th, not until 4:00. The heroes for this whole effort is Rapid City Transit, because their buses run till 6:00. And they have to have 7th or 6th Street to get down. So if Main Street Square could hold off clear until 4:00 to close off 6th, that gives us two hours. During that two hours, there's a bus every 35 minutes, so there's eight buses, the Rapid City Transit is willing to route those buses through your parking lot to be a good citizen. That's a big compromise on their behalf. And they should be given kudos for doing that. So for those two hours, 13 days of the year, they are willing to route their people through there so they can get to their transit center. This is a compromise on Main Street Square, it's a compromise for your downtown market, it's a compromise all the way around. And so, that gives them access to their home. That's what they would be willing to do. That's not easy, they got new big rigs and stuff that are not easy to navigate through some of these areas. So, why Main Street? Because it is your core shopping, dining, and entertainment district. It is your nucleus. And I always say, you want, and I, by the way, I walked it yesterday, and there were some vacancies on Main Street. That's not a good sign. I have no idea why, but you want to always promote your nucleus and make it shine, and then grow from there. And then your summer night stage in Main Street Square create bookends, by putting one on 7th and one down on 6th. And then it keeps people together in a street dance atmosphere in one row, and then just down 7th. It just creates synergy, so we're not, "There are events down on St. Joe, and then you walk up this way and come over this way." We're creating some synergy between these two great organizations and great places. And then these businesses along Main are more conducive to street closures than some of them on St. Joe. And so, between 6th and 7th, and remember, 2/3 of the people on Main supported summer nights, and only 2 out of 7 that responded on St. Joe did. So we'll put it where there's a little more support. But 16 of the 18 businesses between 6th and 7th on Main were financial service, other than financial or fitness, they were general retailer restaurants. And then Main between 7th and Assurant, you know where we're closing out the half-block, there were three shops, the gun shop, spa, and financial services. And then we even looked on Main And then we even looked on Main Street to St. Joe down Seventh, there was nine businesses. There was a mix there. I mean, we inventoried all these businesses even. And then along St. Joe between Seventh and Sixth, so we looked at all those, there's 23 businesses, but there was no restaurants or dining. I mean, there was no nightlife. Most of the businesses were the kind that closed at five or six. As a matter of fact, a lot of them are specialty retails that there's no incentive for them to really stay open later than that. And then between Sixth and Fifth, you had one restaurant and one retailer. And so it just made way more common sense that if there was ever going to be a place that would stay open in the evening hours and get with the modern era, it would be Main Street. And so your critical masses locate along Main Street and I want, and it's called the 10-10-10 rule. In three linear blocks, if you want your downtown to be a destination, you have to have 10 places that serve food. Could be confectionery, coffee shop, doesn't matter, in three linear blocks. You need 10 places that are destination retail shops like Prairie Edge, Dakota Drum, those kinds of places. And at least three, at least 10 that are open after six o'clock. And there was a more likelihood of people being open after six than on St. Joe by a wide margin. So, number six, the street won't be closed until 3:00 PM. I think this needs to be in the permit. And by the way, not 1:30, not 2:00, not 2:30, not 2:55. Because I heard a ton of complaints about the streets being closed and then the, the crew would be out there early, closing them early. And so I think it has to be 3:00. It needs to be not 2:58, 2:59. It needs to be 3:00. And I think that's really important. That puts a pressure on them to get it done in time. But it needs to be 3:00 and it needs to be pronto. And by the way, when it comes to the barricades, a lot of complaints we heard were summer nights is like the Gestapo out there, the way they order us around and everything. So for instance, I actually saw a picture of one of the barricades that says, "This street's going to be closed and if your car's not gone, we're towing you away." I think you have to have a different attitude. I would like to see it on the barricade. There would be a sign that says, "Getting ready for the Black Hills biggest event." Number one, if I'm a visitor or something goes, wow, there must be something cool happening tonight. And then put, no parking here after 2:30. Cars will be tuned until 45. But remember, the streets are still not closed till three. Make sense? If you do that, at least it's like, wow, there's something cool happening. You want to do something else that I think would be good? I would get the cadets out of police uniforms. I would have them wear event staff t-shirts like they do in Main Street Square. I heard a lot of complaints from merchants that they come in there and these kids are in there and "We're the police here and we're ordering you around." Think of this as a concert. Think of this as an event. You know, and so we heard a lot of that. I mean, let it be, come on, let's be more casual. Let's be more, you know. And so I think that's really important. I think they should wear event staff t-shirts. I mean, this is a celebration, not a police academy. And so, and then work with them. I heard lots of complaints and I know that, you know, where the cadet would come in because, hey, we got a lot of power here. And they started ordering people, who owns that car out there? We're gonna tow it, you know? It's just that kind of an attitude that, that I heard a lot of complaints about. Oh my God, emails. I read them on Facebook and, you know, and, and so those are, those are things. And I think that's, you know, and by the way, it might be one guy doing this, creating this problem. But you know what? It only takes one of these cadets to do that. And then, you know what? This, this is a volunteer thing. I mean, they call this place their home. And so, you know, I think there's a lot of anxiety, a lot of animosity towards some of your, your summer night staff. Remember, these are good people. And so, but they need to get rid of the get the hell out of the way, we're coming through attitude. I heard that almost universally. That is what has to change. So. This is why you have somebody from the outside here. All vendor booths should be in the middle of the street. You know, I grabbed this picture from the web. And I looked and I looked at this picture and you notice I noticed on the left side of that picture, you know, for you and the audience, the left side of the picture, there's no fence right about the middle picture. Notice all the people at the stores. Right? Notice them on the left side. Now look on the right side where you got the fence in the vendor booths. Behind those, those stores, there's nobody in front of them. You gotta quit walling off your merchants. No wonder you create lots of animosity. So what has to happen is your vendor booth should be right down the middle of the street. Your beer garden should be right down the middle of the street. So you create a pathway on the left and the right. And by the way, if you have to have an emergency vehicle come through there, they can still get access. But right now, what you do, you fence off your retailers instead of inviting them to the party. And that has to change. If you did that one thing alone, because I kept looking at these pictures and everywhere where there's a fence, there's nobody on the outside of the fence. They're all in the middle. And where you get rid of the fence, those retailers have lots of people in front of them. That could make a big difference right there. Now, I know that a lot of times fired department says, well, we don't want those down the middle street. We need access. But you know what? If you do this drawing right here, they still have access. So these are ways you can make it work. But once again, you see all those vendor booths are right smack in front of the retailer. What it makes is that retailer back there is in the backyard instead of in the, you gotta invite them to the party if you want to make this work on Main. And that's what has to change. And so, the other thing you want to do is stage it differently. Main Street Square is all about family and they don't allow any smoking during summer nights on their place. I think that this should also be the kids zone. Notice there, right there. Is so for the summer nights, if you can create a transition zone, the kids over 21 stay over here. Now, it doesn't mean that no kids that are under 21 can ever go over there on the left. But I'm gonna say, if you have kids rides, you have inflatables and everything, do that transition zone. That's what we're trying to say. It doesn't mean families and, it doesn't mean that everything on the left there is a beer garden, by the way. Families, kids can go over there. But what it's trying to do is create kind of a transition zone to where you have all your music and the beer gardens, everything more over this direction. Then you've got your kids zone and then you've got Main Street Square. So it really creates kind of a transitionary process. Does that make sense? Okay? And then invite your visitors. You know what? Visitors would love it. And visitors love mingling with lowers. I send the board a US travel, which is the organization that promotes the United States around the world. And you know, the biggest push in tourism now is arrive like a visitor, arrive as a visitor, leave as a local. People want to connect with the local people. And they could do it at summer nights. And you know what? They don't know what you have in your downtown. You just gave them a reason to come find out. And I think that would be awesome. Number eight, I'm gonna go away from this. I think that next three years, you need to take Main Street down to two lanes instead of three. Widen your sidewalks, create outdoor cafes. You can have additional vendors, those kinds of things. I think you need to do that. That's what we want these days across the United States. We want to narrow the streets and create more pedestrian-friendly. And so if you close this down to two lanes, so it's not a, if they want a major thoroughfare, that's why Omaha exists. And by the way, when I hear people say, well, Roger, you're gonna create congestion, guess what? Congestion is the downtown's very best friends. Because people slow down and they get to notice what you really have to offer. Guaranteed, it's downtown's best friend. I urge you in the next three years to close that down, go down to two lanes instead of three. You want another one? You know what I'd like to see you do? Once you get it down to two lanes, a couple of years later, I'd like to see you go back to two-way traffic. Makes it a lot easier, particularly if you're a visitor and particularly since you don't have wayfinding signage about how to get to Main Street Square. Because if we come down Mount Rushmore off Omaha as a visitor, we go to Main Street, we cannot turn. We have to figure out how to go around. We have to go down St. Joe, go up, you know what I mean? If you're a visitor, that's not so easy to do. So think about that, opening back up to two ways. And by the way, what will happen is people say, you will still get two direct, two lanes going each direction. It's just that one's on St. Joe and one's on Main. So you know, I want you to take on your CVB's new mantra, do big things. I think you need to do that. I mean, you have an astonishing downtown that's just kicking off. And number 10, in next five years, we'd love to even see you extend Main Street Square across Sixth. You know, see that oval circle on the left, right next to Prairie Edge? We thought, wouldn't it be cool if you had a stage that way? You know what the part of your problem is with your stage on Main Street Square? It faces away from all your dining. So if you, you know what I mean? All the little restaurants that are in the building there? I mean, the music's facing towards, towards the corner of Main and Sixth. So anyway, something to think about. I mean, we're thinking big. We're thinking beyond just this. And so, number 11, I would urge you to do a best practices mission to a couple of these places. Go to Greenville, South Carolina. Go to Asheville, North Carolina. Go to Third Street Promenade. This is Greenville, North, South Carolina. I was just there last week. This was it in the 70s. That's it in the 80s. They narrowed it down to two lanes, not three, not four. And they did angle and parking like you did. They put in those street trees and this is what it looks like now. It's an amazing city. By the way, it's about 80,000 people. And they, so they widen those sidewalks. They created little alcoves for, for street musicians and entertainers. They have nice, big, wide sidewalks with all kinds of outdoor cafes. I mean, it just really sings. It just really works. Their merchants are doing better than ever before. Things like district gateways we'd like to see you do when you come in on Main Street. You know, so this little plan where you do is going to go far beyond just summer nights. We're gonna go back to that plan we did five or six years ago and say, wait a second, you still need to do this and this and this. You know, this gateway is a million bucks. You don't have to spend that kind of money. But it creates a sense of place. Hey, this is downtown San Diego, their gas lamp quarter. We'd love to see you do this along Main, whether it's at Mount Rushmore and down at First or Second. You know, and by the way, there's what it looks like at night. Create a sense of place. You know, it can be done with pole banners. It can be done with, by the way, these are not even pavers. That's stamped into the asphalt. It's called street print. It's about six bucks a square foot. You could have whatever design you want. It could be musical notes. It could be anything. By the way, see the guys on the other side of the street? They just finished this side. You can drive on it within five minutes. It's embossed down there. It's not paint. So you can do snow removal over it and everything. Whatever designs you want. It's just about making downtown more vibrant. But then the big deal is outdoor cafe dining. And right now, you know, your sidewalks aren't quite wide enough and I know some places are doing a little bit. But these are just rough examples because I didn't want to take a bunch of time. And, um, but this is the future. Third places, that's what you need to do. That's Covington, Kentucky, a city of 5,000 people. These are the kinds of things you need to do in your downtown. You know, that's Salem, Massachusetts. You know, it doesn't even have to be expensive. I mean, some places even do this. They'll get rid of parallel parking. In their case, you know, you have angle and parking, which is good. By the way, where they'll actually do this during the summer months and they take those down, put them in storage during the winter months. But these are all examples of bringing your downtown to life, far beyond. So if the merchants on Main Street are gonna say, okay, we're gonna let summer nights go there for those 13 days of the year, we still want to find some things that we could do to make them more than get compensated for that. And that's what will be in this plan. I mean, this is in a town where they did this. They weren't even allowed. And I'm not so sure you have to do this. If you narrow it down to two lanes, you're gonna have plenty of width. But in this town, they had 14 restaurants in one year did it and their downtown retail almost doubled in one year. Just by making it a central gathering place. And finally, I'll show you this one. This is Asheville, North Carolina, a place I want you to go. And I don't know if you've been there, but it's a great destination. This is what it looks like at night. And so it is, look at this. They put in these, these are kind of like bus shelters. And right along their Main Street, see these wood? You can see the wood containers? They have vendors that actually bring those out every day at 10:00 in the morning and they put them down and they're out there for most of the day. I mean, it is so cool. They've brought it to life. But you have to have wider sidewalks. You have to do those things. And these could be merchants that you already have. And then at night, they pick those things up. They put them in the backs of their cars. But that's what Asheville did. They took an old Woolworth store. It's all full of artisans. All the artists have to live within a 30-mile radius. And they pay a couple hundred bucks a month for their little booth. You know, they have street musicians everywhere. They just invite them. They want them out there. In the beginning, they actually paid them. They had like a $10,000 a year budget. They pay her, people like her, 35 bucks. She'd make the rest and she had to be out there on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And now they don't have to. They have musicians coming everywhere. And by the way, the average age in Asheville went from 62 to 33 in five years. Because young people wanted to be there. It's an amazing destination. They even have chess tables right in the middle of their downtown. Even my wife got caught up into it. You know, and so, you know, this is what their logo looks like. They have not convinced their police department, put that on the sides of their cars yet. Although I thought it was a good quote. Anyway, you like it, buddy. But, look at their wayfinding signs. Notice the colors at the top of the signs. Everything they do fits it. And by the way, it's a very artsy community. Notice the little finial, the little flame on the very top. Every single sign has a little different finial on the top, just to illustrate who they are and what they're about. But that's what you can do. I mean, if you do a wayfinding system to help people find your downtown, I know you have one or two wayfinding signs right downtown, but they're, they're not meant for vehicles. They're meant for pedestrians. There's too many items on them. They're too small to read from a vehicle. And so this is what they did in Asheville. It works. I did that pretty fast. So. Actually, I took more time than I thought. This is my last one. Pass a council resolution, adopt these recommendations. And then work with your local business. Say, how can we capitalize on it? How can we take advantage of it? One thing you're missing that I recommended five years ago is creating a brochure that was the very best of Rapid City. Your five very best restaurants, your five very best retail shops. And I can guarantee you, almost 90% of them are gonna be right downtown. And then your top 10 activities. And by the way, you might add Mount Rushmore to that, but I'm not talking about your top 10 activities being, you know, water parks out there and reptile gardens and all those things. I'm talking about Main Street Square being one of them. I'm talking about those kinds of experiences that you have downtown, summer nights. I'm talking about those kinds of things. You have not promoted your anchor tenants. I think that's something you could do. And so that'll be in there. But I think you need to do this. You know what? You're not gonna make everybody happy. I'm sure that there's gonna be a line of people here gonna complain about our recommendations. But we spent nearly four months trying to figure out the best way to make this work so that it is a great experience, is a safe experience. And we've heard the comments about, well, it keeps degrading every year. We're getting more drunkenness. And I hear all of those things. And I can't speak to the police department, but one thing I heard from somebody was, you know what? It's a lot easier to police 20% of population when they're all within three blocks than it is when they're all over Rapid City. And so, with that, you know, I think what you have is something really amazing. And I think everybody in the United States would love to have what you have with summer nights. It is a great event that is worth saving and worth giving them a five-year permit. I think it's unfortunate that they have to come back every single year and beg for permission. And then they have like 90 days to go out and find all their sponsors and everything. They have to commit to bands and stuff and then hope that they can get permission. I think if you want to keep summer nights, you should give them five years. I think that just makes sense. And that's all I have. So thank you very, very much, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger, for the presentation. We have approximately 10 speaker request forms. And we're going to go through these in the order received.
Yes, sir.
Yes, the question from a council member is, do the, do the council members get to ask questions? And the answer is yes. We're going to go to audience, uh, audience comment first. And then once that has been completed, we will, we will give Roger a chance to address the concerns that have been raised if he can. And then we will close public comment and then we will, we will go to the council for questions and, and comments. We'll first go to, and by the way, for Roger's benefit and for the benefit of the, of the council, if you could please identify which business you're with when you, when you come up and describe the general location of it. We'll first go to Gary Larson of 507 Sixth Street, Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory, one of my daughter's favorite stores. Gary, we do have a three-minute rule, so if you could please keep your comments within.
Well, I can talk really fast. Um, I was in the insurance business. I've been a businessman.
I've been a businessman in Rapid City for 40 years. I'm pretty much semi-retired from the insurance business. We built the building in 1987. We wanted to be in the central part of town, so we built on Fifth Street, right as it was developing to go all the way through town. Made a group, location, location, location. I used to drive down St. Joe to work every morning. Lived in the west side of town. There were probably at least 12 empty buildings on St. Joe from West Boulevard down to Fifth Street. Used to go home on the fifth, out back on Main. Probably about 12 empty buildings there, too. The downtown people, of which we've been just a peripheral part in my insurance career, have done a tremendous job. The Downtown Association has really gone big in the last few years. Destination Rapid City, the Square, Dan Saffner in particular, the folks at the, um, Summer Nights, it's incredible. My wife, my longtime business partner and general manager of our insurance agency, we decided to start another business and we did a lot of research. It's called Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory. It's a franchise out of Durango, Colorado. Another neat little town. Surprised you didn't have some information on it. It's a lot like Rapid City. They have an 1880 train there on steroids called the Silverton Railway that goes up into the mountains from Durango, Colorado. As we researched where to go, they advised us many times to look seriously at downtowns and especially if you've got a downtown that's starting to happen. Their highest rate of failure was in malls and strip malls. And even in tourist areas like Bend, Oregon, they've had one that was really bad. Roanoke, Virginia, we bought some stuff from a place that failed there in a mall. I would reiterate just about everything this gentleman has said. I'd add a couple of things. If there's controversy, I, one of the thoughts I had is alternate back and forth. Maybe one month here, one month there. The other thing would be, we have trolleys running around. I commend the folks at the Firehouse for getting the buses they had. That's the one thing Durango, Colorado does. They have their trolleys that run during the day to go to some of the attractions around town. At night, they run them from the hotel corners, like, you know, up on La Crosse Street and the interstate and 61 exit. And they offer to bring these people down. They eat downtown, they shop downtown, the stores are open. We stay open in the summer. We've only been here a year, but we stay open usually till nine and usually till 10:00 on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Saturday night. I can't say enough about the fact that it's a three-day weekend now and it's great for businesses. And it's changing. And he's right. It's what's happening. And I've been to Europe and it is happening there big time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. And we'll now go to Dennis Halterman, who owns the factory in the 600 block of St. Joe.
Thank you. I just took a few notes here. You know, with all due respect to Mr. Brooks, there's not a single business consultant that exists in the 21st century marketplace that indicates shutting off streets and having a party is how one gets business into their business. The integration into the marketplace is considerably more complex than that. And putting up barriers to entry such as this one and Mr. Brooks, it's not about, just about towing cars. And in fact, they don't tow them till 3:00. So your plan makes it at 2:45, they start shutting the roads down at 12:30. You know, it's a great party. Everybody agrees with that. Nobody disagrees that it's not a great party. Blocking off our main thoroughfares just isn't appropriate for that. We've been down there for years and it's absolutely devastating. The thing that concerns us is when we come up and we try and discuss this and have a conversation and talk about how devastating this is to the businesses, you know, pejorative labels are thrown on us as though we're fun haters. And we're not. We want to have fun. We want it to work. Mr. Brooks, if it can't, you know, if 10 of 12 shut down because they put it into a park, please use your skills and knowledge and education to consult with us and tell us how to make one work in a park because we have one right across Omaha Street with a band shell that's not used. We're putting in the promenade there. It's an outstanding way for us to continue to expand outside. The fact of the matter is, putting all of this into this area that we are goes against some of the most authoritative statements and treatises on how downtown revitalizes, and that's the National Historic Trust Main Street Program. This goes pretty much contrary to a lot of the things that they seem to say from my analysis of it. Perhaps Mr. Brooks can help us with that. European comparisons aren't particularly accurate for a small town in western South Dakota. Malls are not a good comparison. We see our mall is struggling. Malls across America are struggling. I just came here tonight hoping for something better with leadership than a series of compromises. And we're not going to make everybody happy. Leadership is about building consensus. And I think we have shown as downtown merchants, a lot of consensus. But shutting off our roads and taking away 20% of our days in the summertime each week, it's not going to be viable. And I know there's new businesses that will come in and be very excited about things. But once you've been downtown for year after year after year, you see that this, what is essentially a private organization, bringing in non-downtown merchants and making all kinds of money. Why they have volunteers, I don't know. Why they don't pay their staff, I don't understand. What we need to do is come up with a better plan to increase its footprint and just move it to another street that's going to cause similar challenges with us. And in that regard, I think what we need to really look at is getting into Memorial Park with our promenade and continue the fun and continue the party, but not interrupt the businesses that are down there all year long. I'll be open tomorrow. It is not just summertime. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Halterman. And we'll now go to Susan Heil.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm not a talker, but we're going to try this. I own Mona Lisa's on Main. I'm across from the Firehouse Restaurant. And I obviously am in the rare form because I love it. My business went down 35 to 40% every Thursday last year because it went to St. Joe. And evidently, I'm one of the rare businesses, but I like it and I hope it continues. And I love the families that come down. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. We'll now go to Chris Baer. Chris Baer.
Bojo's Pizza.
Hello. I'm the owner of Bojo's Pizza and my husband and I are very much in favor of summer nights. We had our, our business up on West Main up until a year ago, and then we recently moved downtown. We used summer nights as a marketing event to tell people about our product, about our brand and where we were located. After we moved downtown, several people came up to us and said, where are you? Well, we were able to tell them that because we had so many people down there. When you drive downtown in your vehicle, because there is traffic and you're worried about people pulling out and hitting you, you drive forward like this. You don't look at the businesses as you're driving down the street. If you're walking down the street, visiting downtown, you notice the businesses. Candy Leather is having a really good year this year because of my husband. He found them when he was down there and frequents it all the time now. So it is good for business and we support it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We'll now go to Del Voth. Del.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sam. My name is Del Voth. I'm a Realtor at Exit Real Estate and we office at Third and Main. And Summer Nights has been awesome for creating foot traffic into our real estate company. And I can equate several deals that have transpired from out of town people that have found us on a Thursday night. I'm also a part owner. I'm just the money. My, my, my partner is the talent. We own the great clips here in town. And we finally secured this year, is it The Night Under the Stars? Is that the, the movie? Yes. We secured that. We've been after that for like three or four years, but people have sponsored that and just stayed there. And finally, one opened up and you'll have to take that out of my dying hand. I think the vibe in downtown Rapid is awesome. I would speak to you briefly as a senior songwriter, someone that has performed at Summer Nights and also has performed at the band shell. And what I can tell you is, I'm not very used to microphones. What I can tell you is, the, the, the acoustics at the band shell are very difficult for bands. It's hard to hear yourself. Sound echoes. It's cement. It's tin. It's hard to hear. If you want to, would, would want to have bands that are on a more regular basis, I would suggest some acoustical tiles and some things being, being addressed there. That being said, the stage that Summer Nights provides, great acoustics, easy to hear. Now I would speak to you as a, as a consumer. I've been to both venues. The Memorial Park is more of a, you know, you go there and you set up camp. You're there for the duration. The vibe downtown is much more come-go, lends itself to more elbow rubbing, being seen and being seen. Just a cool vibe. Thank you, Roger, for pointing that out. I didn't know how to, you know, I've heard these big words like, oh, what's the word when you bring people together? Synergy? It's a big word. It's just a cool vibe that downtown is creating because of that. So it's been good for business at, at Exit Real Estate. It's been good personally and love the vibe. Thank you.
Thank you, Del. We'll now go to Mark Bloyd, First Top Gun, 701 Main. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. Thank you. You know, when they first came out with Summer Nights, we thought anything that's good for downtown is good, you know, if it's good for everybody else, that's a good thing. If, if it's not necessarily good for us, well, if it's good enough for everybody else, you know, that we can get, uh, we can get over that for an afternoon. But it really crushes our business on Thursday afternoons. And it does for the other renters that we have in our building, too. You know, it's got a negative impact on us and, and, you know, if it's good for everybody else, I guess that that's fine. But I just wanted to let you know, closing the, the streets early and having no parking and everything, it's just, we might as well close at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon. So it's been kind of difficult for us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mark. We'll go to Judd Nielsen.
Thank you. I'm Judd Nielsen. I'm the co-owner of Untamed Accessories and Clothing with my wife Jennifer. When we moved to town here from Sioux Falls about three years ago, you know, we kind of stumbled into the Main Street, the Summer Nights events. And, you know, we couldn't believe, you know, the, the impact it had versus the Sioux Falls community. So we've been very supportive of it as non-business owners. It, it is an event like no other and it, it really brings a business to a, to a downtown community. When Jennifer started wanting to open up a women's clothing store, you can imagine my, uh, my background being a little bit finance, a little bit engineering. I really wasn't into it too much. You know, but with, with Summer Nights and what it brings to town, the people it brings out, I squeamishly said, yes, let's go for it, knowing that we weren't going to make a lot of money. But we knew that there'd be 10,000 people at least downtown every Thursday that could walk by our store. We opened up in May. Thursdays were by far our biggest traffic flow that we could have. We didn't have any problems down there on Seventh Street. We, we feel also that just the traffic, we got people coming in on Saturdays and, and the next week as well. Without Summer Nights, I'll be honest, we will not be open. We'll close our doors because it's not that big of a deal. We go into wintertime and it's, it's a struggle. And there's not enough foot traffic downtown. But that Thursday night allows us to get 10,000 people seeing our store up in front of them. Uh, and that is, that's so huge for us and so huge for a small business actually to, to stay in, um, to stay in open. So we're big supporters. I'm indifferent to Main Street or St. Joe, but please keep it on Seventh Street because that's going to, you know, that's going to help, help us, you know, maintain employees and, and kind of an economy of downtown where we hate to see those shops that are closed and vacant. So thank you.
Thank you, Judd. We'll now go to Tom Lessin, president of First National Bank.
Thank you, Mayor. Roger alluded to where we're at in relationship to the new diagram that he put up there today. One of the things, I'm not here in opposition of Summer Nights. I participate in it. Our bank employees participate in it. We volunteer for the program. We are big supporters of it. But I'm well aware of the NIMBY concept that nobody wants it in their front yard or backyard or wherever it's at. And it is truly about compromise as far as how we do do this and do it right. One of the things, if Roger would put the diagram back up there, I've been through this process now for two years. The first year, the band shell was on the corner of Seventh and Main, facing somewhat kitty corner across the street. They had it where it was available to where vehicle traffic could go around that corner and continue down Main Street going to the west, which was a viable option. I know the very first, uh, Summer Nights that they had, the staff came and they started setting up early, which did cut off a lot of our customer ability to get to the bank. They resolved that. They did push it back and that was a viable option. It did work very well. Last year, they moved the band shell down the other end of the street, so it did not impact us at all. But now this year, they're talking about moving it back there, moving the band shell adjacent to the building where we're at and bringing that closure back further on, uh, next to our building. Roger says, well, you can still get into the drive-up. Well, he failed to point out that coming in from that direction, you're coming in the opposite way of the drive-in, which doesn't work very well. If you've got larger vehicles that are going to have to come in and try to turn around and come back through the building, we also will lose some additional parking on that side of the building. Excuse me. The other thing, and like I say, we've worked with Summer Nights. We're not here in opposition of it. But I can tell you, when those people come to set up, especially on that side of the building, because I actually sit on that side of the building and observe as it goes on, the stuff that they bring in comes in earlier than when they do shut it down. And so if they do put that line, if you will, to the back of our building, that's going to bring those people that are bringing materials and trucks and all that unloading that's done, that will bring it and that will actually block off the alley there. So my position is, is that I think they ought to revert back to two years ago when they had the band shell kitty corner across there, keep the street traffic open so that they could come through there and continue down Main Street. Like I say, we're about compromise too, but I don't think this is quite the right plan. Thank you.
Before we go to our next speaker, Roger, are you, are you able to pull up the?
Sure.
The slide with the map? As soon as Roger has that slide up, we'll be going to Larry Heil, 615 Main. Larry, come on up. Last call for Larry Heil. All right?
I'm sorry. I thought you were dealing with that.
Okay.
My name's Larry Heil. I own a business at 615 Main, Mona Lisa's, in the building. My wife was already up here and I didn't mean to fill out the paper after she already did. But we are both pro. One thing good about Main that I liked, and I mentioned to Jerry Wright one time, we talked last year, was there's so much going on at the park, the Main Street Square area, that I was worried about the kids running across, you know, the street going into St. Joe or that type of thing. So I, uh, I think Main's a good, good viable program. And like my wife just said, I'm not going to waste anymore of your time that way. Thank you.
And we'll go to Dan Tribby, the Prairie Edge.
Yeah. I don't think the council can see your pointer, though, because they're looking at a different screen. Okay.
I'm Dan Tribby with Prairie Edge and the shops at Main Street Square. I, I really, you know, I've listened to everything and been part of downtown and promoting downtown for a long time. And I, I guess I am not, I, I guess I don't understand the question first. I don't think that it is about whether we should have summer nights downtown because I don't know anybody that wants to lose summer nights downtown. As business people, absolutely one of the most wonderful events that could happen. The big question that I hear when I talk to other business people is where? Where should summer nights be located? And I've talked to a lot of people about it. And again, just to kind of paraphrase what Roger said, I hear that a lot. I love summer nights. I just don't want it in front of my place. Well, that's not an answer. You know, that's just a statement. So I guess to look at Roger and the studies that they have done, have they looked at going to Apolda? Is that what it is, in front of the bus station? Could you take that drawing that Roger has and just move that exactly one block to the north? And would that work? Part of why I say that is, in just that blocked off area that you see on Main and Seventh Street, there is probably somewhere between, somewhere 150 to 200 parking places. How valuable are those to summer nights? How valuable are those to the retailers and to the restaurants? And again, I don't have an answer for it, but I just posed that question. Would we lose any viability to summer nights to move it a block north? Certainly, there would be a real inconvenience or an inconvenience to the bus station, without a doubt. But as Roger said, they have already agreed to come through the city admin parking lot. And again, I'm sorry, I don't know how to make this thing work. But if you, they do have that entrance in between the bus stop and.
Just push this little red button. Just hold the little red, there you go.
They could potentially, and again, I don't know what I'm talking about, and this is hypothetical, come through here and then travel in between the Mexican restaurant and the back of the bus stop. Because really, what we're looking at is about an hour of time from five to six o'clock, once the buses quit running. And if you look at that whole street, is that a possibility? And maybe it's not a possibility. But I would just encourage people to look at it and say, this is such a wonderful opportunity for downtown. And again, to paraphrase what Roger said, you know, build this downtown, make it bigger. Can we do it by expanding it a block and getting people to come back into the downtown area to Main and St. Joe and Kansas City? You know, I think as a whole, the business community absolutely supports summer nights. I think we think this is just a wonderful way to showcase downtown. Another thing, you know, Main Street Square got built. Have we talked about the possibility of having summer nights on Main Street Square? And if it doesn't work, why? And the last thing is the five-year permit. I would absolutely agree with Roger. My only point being, if there is a five-year permit, let's have downtown support it and do the right thing in the right place. Make it work for everybody and just really make downtown that much more wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We'll now go to Steve Rollinger. Steve?
Hi, I'm Steve Rollinger. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I don't know if you guys know the history of the summer nights, but I was a downtown president probably, I don't know, Dan, 15, 16 years, something like that. I've been part of it probably for over 20 years. And when I first got on board, downtown was dead. You'd have to worry about, this wasn't an issue because you had nothing going on down there and you had a lot of empty stores and you had some dilapidated downtown. Over the years, people started coming in and started building it up. And the question was, how do we make it vibrant again? How do we bring the young people? Young people never went downtown. It wasn't a place to go. You come down there at night and it was a desert. It was like most big cities. You went downtown, it is like a tombstone. You saw, you know, tumbleweeds going by. So the Chamber of Commerce came to downtown and invited us to go to Boise, Idaho. What a fantastic trip. We went down there and they were showing us that farmer's market that started in two blocks. Now it stretches about 10 blocks. And yeah, it cuts off streets and stuff. But it's about 10 blocks long and it is packed. And it goes till one o'clock and you've never seen so many people there. Then they started talking about this program, Alive After Five. I'd never heard about it. And they said, we get 20,000 to 30,000 people in our downtown. 20,000 to 30,000. By the way, they also did what Roger talked about. They widened the streets and they have stop signs downtown. So if you go through downtown Boise, Idaho, you stop. You don't zip right through it. So I came back to Rapid City, put a big letter together. And then Bob Fuchs came to the downtown meeting. He was one of our members and said, you know, we don't have enough people. We can't do this. So he said, do you mind if I pitch this to the leadership of Rapid City? And the board was unanimous, yeah, if we could get something like this here, it'd be amazing. We were thinking, if you could bring 2,000 people downtown in Rapid City, South Dakota, that would be huge. And I think the first year they did that, they had over 2,000 people. Now we're talking 15, 10,000 to 15,000 people, unheard of. But you go down there on a Thursday night and you see kids down there. You see teenagers down there. You see retired people down there. You see people my age down there. You see people, it's just the community event. I see people down there I don't see during the year. I see them 13 times a year usually, and that's at downtown. It's absolutely amazing. I can't believe how big it's gotten, how great it is. We're having this discussion today because we now have a vibrant downtown. And so you have people who want to be town. You have businesses that are, they're going downtown. They want to be there. Why? Because it's alive. My daughter, she's turning 16 in March. You know where she goes shopping? She goes downtown. Now, I guarantee you, you go back 10 years ago, you didn't have a teenager looking for a dress downtown for prom or whatever. It just didn't happen. She goes down there to buy her tennis shoes now. She loves to go to Main Street Square. They go out there and hang out and they have coffee downtown. We're talking 16-year-olds. 10 years ago, you couldn't find a 16-year-old downtown. So I hope you keep it. It's a fantastic, I just wanted to give you the history of it to let you know how it got here to Rapid City. And I got to say, it's fantastic. And to Mark, I got to tell him, I bought my first gun. You know where I bought it? I bought it downtown at his shop because I went downtown. I've got a friend of mine who brought down there, purchased probably 10 different guns downtown. So I don't buy them on Thursday night when I'm there. But I can guarantee you, I've been to his shop and I bought a gun. And I got friends that go there and it didn't happen on Thursday night. And I will buy another gun and I'm going to buy it downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We'll now go to Payu Harris. And while he's coming up, I want to announce that this is the second to the last speaker request form. And so if you would, if you would like to speak, this is last call. As soon as I finish with the last speaker after Payu, then we're going to clop, Payu, sorry. Known him for years and I still get it wrong. So, Payu. So as soon as we finish with the last two speaker request forms, we're going to then go back to Roger for some more discussion and then we will come to the council. You have the floor, sir.
Okay. For the record, as everyone I'm sure knows already, my name is Payu Harris. I'm from here in Rapid. I just want to say that I really support summer nights. I think it's been really a positive thing for the city. Obviously, we have challenges, but challenges are there so we can figure them out. I've heard different things, one of which is moving them over to the parks. All have pros and cons. One thing to consider is, when we had the whole thing with, I think it was Halloween, but we had pumpkins and everything right out front and extended all the way down. So why not extend it that way? I understand what some of the shopkeepers are saying about, you know, it affects their business. It impacts their business. So the city has a responsibility to kind of weigh both sides. You know, making sure the citizens are having fun, but making sure the shopkeepers are able to stay in business. One option might be, I don't know, maybe a tax incentive, you know, to help accommodate them for lost revenue. There's all kinds of things that could be done. We are one of the most fantastic cities, I think, in the Midwest. I really, really believe in this city. I put this project, Mazacoine, we started here specifically because I believe in this city and I want it to grow. I want to see our shopkeepers here in 20 or 30 years. I grew up around Prairie Mar, or Prairie Edge. And I've watched that grow and grow and grow. When the fire hit downtown, I was standing out front, you know, and I've seen it rebuild. So we'll get through this if we all work together. But we can't forget, you know, our shopkeepers. I've had several shopkeepers that have inquired about, here it comes, Bitcoin and Mazacoine usage. They're anticipating seeing something happen, you know? We can be a next-generation city. And that's what I want to see this, see Rapid become. So I would just encourage council to take whatever steps they can to ensure the viability of, you know, our fair downtown, I should say, and our citizens and our shopkeepers, because they're the lifeblood of downtown. So, thank you much.
Thank you, Payu. And we'll now go to Stephanie Salzusgau. Stephanie?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing us to come and giving us this platform to speak to you tonight. First of all, as a Rapid Cityan, I do enjoy summer nights. I, my daughter and I attend summer nights. We enjoy the event itself. But as a business owner, I'm a little frustrated, to be honest. I made some notes kind of on, as he was speaking. And as far as businesses that stay open, you know, most of the business being done after 6:00 PM, we tried that. We tried staying open until seven. We tried staying open until eight outside of summer. And we maybe had one person come in and usually no sales. I pulled up our sales throughout the year and kind of looked at the numbers based on the time periods. So for us, our biggest, personally at our store, our biggest time of the day is from 12 to 3:00. So when the parking is being closed at 1:30 for the event, that's cutting into our busiest time of the day. As far as bringing people down, yes, we're, the event is definitely bringing people downtown. But are they really coming back? We always, we have a rewards program and that helps with our returning customers. It helps us keep track of people who are returning customers. And if someone is not in the rewards program, we try to make the habit of asking them, well, how did you hear about us? Only once have I ever had someone say, because of summer nights. Because I saw your store walking down because of summer nights. So I guess I'm not really seeing, seeing that return coming back to me. Most of the people that do come on summer nights are the returning customers that are in our rewards program. And almost everyone that's not is someone asking to use our restroom. I also took a look at the number of actual sales during, during the time period of summer nights, some during Thursdays from May, also in June, July, and August, and the time period of 2012 and then this year, 2013. In 2012, when it was on Main Street, we actually had more sales than we did when summer nights was on St. Joe. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll now go to Frank Morrison, 819 Main, representing Thirsties. Good evening, Frank.
Thanks, Mayor. You saved me having to say that I'm Frank Morrison from 819 Main Street. But anyway, we love summer nights. Downtown is incredible. I'd like to thank Roger for all of his efforts. I was in the audience when he spoke probably eight years ago. And he inspired me. I was wandering aimlessly. I didn't really know what I wanted to do. And my daughter lives in Boise and I can tell you that that's incredible. We're not there yet, but we're on our way. Summer nights is, I was against it when I first heard about it. Sandy and I had a little chat about it. And the first week I was right. It was terrible for us. But after that, it just grew and grew. And we had to, Thursday nights, we had to increase our staff because it is really good for business. We love it. If nobody else wants it, we'd be happy to have it. We're clear on the end of Main Street. But if nobody else wants summer nights, we'll take it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We'll now go to Liza Johnston. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Liza. My husband and I own Sergeant Pepper's Kettle Corn. We are a mobile unit, also known as, you know, we're a vendor on, with Main Street Square and summer nights. This will be our seventh summer, I think, being a part of the summer nights. And we also do the downtown up in Spearfish on Friday nights. This has been such an awesome opportunity for our family. We have, it is a family operation. We have a 16-year-old also who can pretty much run his own business, basically, downtown. But I just want to share with you some of the stories that we have encountered in these last several years. I get so excited to meet people from all over the world. And I can truly tell you that this, these two events are phenomenal. And I get so many people coming to me every single week from Australia, Germany, all sorts of European people, North Dakota, Texas, all over. I mean, this one lady in North Dakota was like, you do this every Thursday night? And I was like, yes! She said, this is so cool! You know, North Dakota only does it one Thursday and there's two functions that night. And she's like, that is just awesome! And I hear that exact same response every single year or every single week. We have people that ask us where to eat, where, you know, where are the hotels? You know, where's a good coffee shop? Where's a great dessert place? And I will tell you, I will have people go to those restaurants or those boutiques or those stores and come back with their bags and say, look what I got! And I love the food. It was great. Thank you so much. So I just have to share that if it wasn't for summer nights and Main Street Square, I don't know where we'd be because we have grown. We offer popcorn, which is not, I don't really compete with a whole lot of people downtown. But I also make the best fresh squeezed lemonade and it's a non-alcoholic beverage. And there's a lot of people that come down, adults, just to drink our lemonades. And so I've never had any issues with anybody else. And I am just grateful to have this opportunity to share that. And we thank you, Mayor, and the council for hearing my statement.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to Bob Fuchs, Firehouse Brewing. Good evening, Bob.
Thank you all. I appreciate it greatly. Five years ago, we were a sponsor with Prairie Edge of Roger Brooks and the CVB with me. And I big time, over the years, preached everything that Roger Brooks said tonight. Especially, I want to bring up item 12, where he went through making the streets two ways and bringing the sidewalk out. I think that's something that needs to be done. And I think the city council needs to be a big part of that. Then as far as summer nights goes, I was involved in getting that going and also served on the board the first few years. And I think it's a great event. It's been really wonderful for downtown. It brings many people downtown, as you've heard all night tonight. The biggest problem I see, though, is where we shut the street down, it really adversely affects most of the businesses in that area. I was shocked that there were actually businesses that were in that area where the street was shut down and they were pro summer nights. Most, all the businesses that I've talked to, and it'll be interesting to see what comes of this after this meeting, most of them keep telling me they don't want summer nights down there. As far as the Firehouse Brewing Company is concerned, we don't want it on Main Street. When it was on Main Street, our sales were not good. I shouldn't say not good. Our sales were way down for most Thursday nights. When it moved over to Kansas City Street, our sales went way up. And I think the people on Kansas City Street, that's the same thing that they're experiencing now, to the point where I almost feel like I need to apologize to those people for giving them my problem that I had before. So having said that, I really hope we can find an alternative area to put the summer nights, but not be on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We'll now go to Ron Weifenbach. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I came here tonight with total intention of not to say anything. The last thing my wife said to me before I left was, keep your mouth shut. And so I would. Can't do it. I mean, I think that, I think I voiced my concerns over summer nights over the years. I was one of the people that sat right in one of those seats right there and said, it's a good idea. Let's give it a shot. I was also one of those people that sat right there in one of those seats and said, let's do this Main Street Square. Let's do it. And the reason that I said, let's do it, from my perspective, was exactly what these guys were facing tonight. I don't have a business in Rapid City, but I have owned businesses, several of them. I do understand how businesses operate. And one of the things they don't want is people sitting in front of them telling them, we're going to shut your road down. We're going to stop people from coming to your business on Thursday night, without a choice in the matter. Over the years, some of these people, and you probably won't see a lot of them here tonight, have been pillorized. I had to pick my jaw up off the ground after Mr. Fuchs spoke. Probably one of the biggest beneficiaries of summer nights there is. And so when this came up originally, I contacted the mayor and thanked Mr. Mayor for getting back to me and telling me about this meeting tonight. But I got to say, to all due respect for Mr. Robert Brooks, for $24,900, I could give you all a sales job, too. Really, I mean, this all came back down to what we already know. Main Street Square has been very nice for Rapid City. It's working for Rapid City. And there's a reason that they did it. And that was to congregate. And that was to congregate those people in that area. Don't close the streets off. Don't block the pedestrian people. Don't serve alcohol on the streets of Rapid City. There's no reason for it when you have the summer, you have the Main Street Square. And I listened to the presentation tonight, and I really said to myself, I want to keep this to that, and I won't address the other issues that I have with alcohol consumption on the streets. And containing it to a small area makes sense. And Mr. Brooks, over and over, said several times, I mean, the whole conversation was about Main Street Square tonight, for $24,900 that you guys paid, but y'all didn't vote on it. Okay? Y'all didn't vote on it. This was an instruction by the mayor, and his, because I'd asked for the RFP. So whether you like it or not, the taxpayers of Rapid City paid $24,900 tonight for a regurgitation of what we already knew. We all know that Main Street Square is successful. And moving Summer Nights to Main Street Square should be a viable option. It frees the streets up, it doesn't, if you really, if you really go to the heart of hearts, if you guys really take your time, you go out and you listen to some of these people who are getting their businesses shut off, and put your place, put yourself in their shoes. And there's, there's other issues that go with this, but we're talking about the closure and moving, moving this party, like it has suggested tonight, party, to an off-street location. That's what we're talking about. I'm disappointed that we've spent $24,900 to tell you guys what you already knew. And the only facts that were reiterated tonight were the ones you already knew. If you read the, if you read the information, he talked about three-fourths of the city, the businesses downtown not liking it on Main Street, whether it was three-fourths, two-thirds, and a majority of the people on the other street don't like it at all. Those are the same two facts that you guys already knew. So I sat here for over an hour, listened to $24,900 presentation, to give me the same facts that you guys already knew. I was really hoping I would come here and hear something different tonight, but that's what I heard. So I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ron. We'll go to Mike Archbold from Forefront Design. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Just wanted, I wasn't planning on speaking either, but I just felt, as I listened to the comments, I really am excited. And one of the things, I've been in this community for exactly just about three years now. I've been involved with Downtown Association a good part of those three years. And one of the reasons I came and got involved much, Sarah got me involved in the Downtown Association is because I think, and I see, is what I do as an architect, when we work with people, and we do planning and master planning their communities and downtowns, and we work with retail centers, different people, they want what we are developing here, excuse me. And what we've done with the Main Street Square has been exciting and great, and been of great value to our community. The idea of how we're taking the promenade across to connect to the Civic Center is another wonderful method and idea. I really hesitate with the idea of moving Summer Nights across the busy thoroughfare, which is where the main traffic needs to flow with our downtown, if you're going across town, rather than taking it through, down Main Street and St. Joe, and moving that large of an event over there. I volunteer during Pumpkin Festival to help with, my voice got truth that my son's involved in, to help with the pumpkin chucking part of that, that event. And the, dealing with moving that large of a group of people from Main Street Square across the street there on Omaha, and getting them on just to throw the pumpkins, and then moving them back is a major ordeal. And it's, it was always a concern and a worry. And so, if you have that large of a crowds that you have at Summer Nights doing that kind of thing, I think it's important to connect and keep two different events, one a little bit more family-oriented, that you've already established with Main Street Square. And I think it's important that we keep some of the vibrance to the downtowns. I, we work with communities in Wyoming, North Dakota, Nebraska. I've also worked in Grand Junction, Colorado, on communities who are trying to do exactly what we're trying to do, and bring that life down to their downtowns after hours, after five o'clock. And the things that Summer Nights is providing that opportunity, I really feel it still has some things to work through, but it is something that's, when we talk to new businesses who are coming and looking to locate here, the, one of the first questions they ask us about is the downtown. And do you have events like Summer Nights? And when we tell them about Summer Nights, it really helps them get excited about bringing their businesses here. And so I'm really in favor. I hope that you'll continue to keep, and we can work through some of this, the logistics of getting the Main Street Square and Summer Nights working together on that Thursday night, but I think it's a great opportunity. I hope we can keep it a family and a community event, and not combine it all into just the one site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And we'll now go to Josh Precht, Rapid City Downtown Association President. Good evening, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple clarifications on the survey numbers that were presented by Roger, that Bob Fuchs had mentioned as well. The numbers for businesses, we only asked our members of the Downtown Association that were in the 500 block to the 800 block on Main Street and St. Joseph Street, and the side streets of Sixth and Seventh. Now, the positive results that Roger had mentioned were actually, there were 11 positive to one negative. Those were all the businesses that were in the 500 block of Main Street and St. Joseph Street. So these are the businesses that were not affected by street closures. When you go to the 600 and 700 block of Main Street, it was actually six positive, five negative. So the results were a lot more close to that. And then when you go over to St. Joseph Street, they're actually more in the negative side. It was, guests were positive, and five were negative. And they were all saying that, you know, on Main Street, people responded on Main Street and said, you know, it's great that it's on St. Joseph Street, because that year wasn't on their street, wasn't blocking them. And the people on St. Joseph Street, it was great when it was on Main Street. So, that's just a clarification I wanted to give on that, because the numbers seemed a little skewed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Have I missed anyone? Public comment is now closed, and we'll now go to Roger, Roger Brooks for, for follow-up.
Got a writer's cramp. So I'll try to, try to address some of these. First of all, somebody made a comment that the roads are going to be cut down, closed down at 12:30. That is not what I said. It would be 3:00. So I wanted to get that, I keep saying it, but people aren't hearing me. So that with this, what we're recommending, and what they've agreed to, is no roads will be closed till 3:00. However, parking would probably stop at 2:30. See what I mean? So, that was one. Number two, can you make it work in parks? No. By the way, I sit on the board of the International Downtown Association, and I headline most of the Main Street Centers' conferences, and so I'm very active in those. And so I'm very active with the Main Street Program, which was, is now split off from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We've been down that road before, and that's why even farmers' markets that used to be in parks are moving downtowns. And so that's what you have to understand about that. Very seldom does it ever work when you disengage it from the downtown. And as far as coming up with a consensus, if you want to be like the White House, fine, good luck. I mean, sometimes you have to make hard choices, and if you have to pay somebody almost 25 grand and make the hard choices, then that's great. I mean, you know, and so this was not about regurgitating what you already knew. This is about coming up with something that can work, that is going to require compromise. As far as teenagers downtown, a couple of cool things is, there has, there were comments that, well, you know, the teenagers don't have anything to do, they tend to get in trouble and stuff. Well, just so you know, and, and by the way, I hardly talked at all about Main Street Square. I think it's really cool. But one thing that they are doing, just so you know, is they are bringing in a climbing wall as part of Summer Nights. They are also bringing in more inflatable, so that you have the kids and the teenagers are more active and more part of this, to keep it as a family event. So I just wanted to let you know that that is something they're working on for this summer. As far as the impact to businesses, you know, and, you know, I've worked, I've heard these arguments over and over and over, but that is why I said I thought it was really important to invite your visitors downtown, which you don't really do right now. There's no brochures at any hotel rooms, anywhere in the city, that talk about Summer Nights that I saw when I was there. And I've asked two hoteliers yesterday whether they, what they did about Summer Nights. And some of them say, well, we promote it when guests ask what there is to do around here. So that is something I think you need to do. Number two, I think you need to promote your anchor tenants, those best of your business downtown. The number-one asked question of visitors in the world, where's a good place to eat? And don't have me a list. So that can help. I think doing a wayfinding system, just so you know, wayfinding increases retail sales and services nationally by 18%. You don't have a wayfinding system, even tell people you have it downtown. By the way, if I stay at the Hilton Garden Inn, and I say, tell me how to get to downtown Rapid City, you know what it does? It puts me on I-90. See what I mean? You have no wayfinding. That right there could increase your business 18%. I think opening up your streets to two-way traffic will also increase your business. And then, and then, so I think there's a whole, and one thing that we wanted to make sure we do that in this, this is not just about where Summer Nights is situated, but what can we do to help these businesses be more successful? I mean, having 10,000 to 15,000 people in front of your stores, you know, I mean, you know, as far as staying open later, you know what? Back in the 70s, back in the 60s, let me put it, when the first suburban mall came in, they were closed on Sundays. In the 70s, malls were open 12 to 5 on Sundays, they were closed at 6 on Saturdays, they closed at 6 during the week. You move to the 80s, and now, every successful mall is open at 10:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. The problem is, if one business stays open downtown, and the other 25 don't, no wonder it doesn't work. Plus, you have a reputation that nothing's open after 6, and so sometimes you can't try it for two weeks. You have to do it over and over and over. And that, by the way, starts with the property owners. We've worked in Boise, we've worked in Jackson, Wyoming, we've worked in all these places, and it starts with the property owners in their lease agreements that say, well, you will be open this many days a week, just like in a mall. In a mall, if you're not open by 10:05, you're fined $1,000 for every five minutes you open late. So for those that say, well, we tried to open later, it didn't work, it's because you tried to do it by yourself, and you can't do it by yourself. I mean, if, that's why malls make it all consistent. And somebody else mentioned now, one person said the parking, you know, closed streets at 12:30, another person said at 1:30. No, that would be at 2:30, the street would be closed at 3:00. And we want to make sure that it is closed at 3:00, and not get overambitious volunteers going out there and closing it at 2:45. I think it's very important that they stick to that. You know, for one thing about businesses, I've had the conversation of plazas all the time, and I know that when Main Street Square came in, and I suggested you get rid of 60 parking spaces, put a plaza there, there was a pretty major outcry about losing those spaces. Here's my comment to businesses. Are you telling me your business isn't worth walking a block for? End of story. You know, as far as, you know, somebody made a comment about maybe alternate the sites. I thought that was a pretty cool idea. Never came up before. But maybe you do that. I mean, I don't know. You know, maybe say, well, this, you know, maybe this month we're gonna put it here, and this month we're gonna do it here. That's kind of a cool idea. And that's something we could easily explore, if you did that alternation. That way, we make everybody angry instead of just one group. But at least we, we share the pain. So, as far as the, the ban shell being on Main facing the corner, that was the one thing I heard the most complaints about, that the ban shell was smashing into a building. There was no way to get an audience in front of it, you had to stand off to the left or the right side. That was the one staging we heard the most complaints about, was staging it where it was across the corner on Main there. And, you know, as, as far as staging blocking the bank's alley and everything, I would say absolutely not. You could even move the stage closer down to Main, so that their staging area behind the stage. On that drawing, I have it at the very back of the bank, so you say, okay, let's move it down. Or maybe we go into insurance and say, could we borrow your three or four end spaces? They're just on the inside, so that you're doing that. But I absolutely agree that you cannot block the bank's access. And I know that stuff, making that U-turn in there. And I thought, well, could we, even that little parking lot back there, could we work that? I mean, this was, there was no easy, simple answers. Let's see. As far as moving Summer Nights to Main Street Square, good luck with that. I don't know how Main Street Square could possibly house 10,000 people. If you've ever been there from Monday night, you know the movies on the square, with 3,500 people, it's packed. And so there's just no way that Main Street Square by itself could house all of Summer Nights. And by the way, that was my very first question when I came and talked to Dan and his staff. Why couldn't this just be at Main Street Square? And then, you know, as far as having some things in Main Street Square and some over in Memorial Park, you know what? Omaha's like the Great Wall of China. I've seen people with strollers running across that, you know, quarter-mile divide. I mean, that just doesn't make any sense at all. I think it's a, I think it's a pedestrian nightmare. I, I think it's, I, I just don't think that's possible. You know what? You know, there was days, the old days talked about creating a big overpass and all those things. It's just too far of a distance to try to make those two work together. You know, and I know it's not easy, and I mean, my, you know, we've worked in downtowns for years, and we want these businesses to be successful. And so we're trying to figure out, well, what can be the compromise? What can we do to help promote them? What can we do to bring new people downtown that don't even know you have a downtown that will go in some of these restaurants? Can we stage these vendors so they're not blocking off entrances? I think there's a number of things you could do that can help these businesses be more successful with Main Street. And remember, this plan, when you get it in a couple of weeks, will be far beyond just where is Summer Nights staged. We're going down the road, talking about Dwayne traffic, we're talking about those things of closing, narrowing your streets, widening your sidewalk, sidewalk cafes, all of those different issues. I mean, we're going back and re-looking at that plan, so this is far beyond this. But this was just the main thing that we had to answer. And there is no easy answer, so, thank you very, very much for having me here. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. We'll now go to our council. We'll first go to Alderoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brooks, there's one number I'm looking for. Hopefully you do have it, although it wasn't presented. When you spoke about these events being moved to parks, and 10 out of 12, I believe you said, failed, what was the distance of the park from that downtown core area where the event had been staged?
And we, we have all those. In most cases, it was within half a mile. Some of them were like, right across the street.
Okay. I think that's the only number I needed.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, but none of them were far away, so we wanted to make sure that was really clear, that these were where they tried to put it, at an adjacent or close to park.
Go to Councilman Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roger, you'll probably be pleased that I do not have a question for you, but I've got some comments. And early, I think, in your presentation, you, you mentioned in terms of tourism, enter a tourist, leave a native. Or words to that effect. And I want to thank you personally for the work that you've done. I, I've learned a lot sitting here. I didn't get to meet you or hear you the first time you were here in town. And I've listened with open ears, looking for ways that we, as a group, and we as a city, can serve to further revitalize downtown, because we have seen, for those of us who have been here for any time at all, and I'm a transplant, came here with the Air Force in 1987, and I have seen downtown change dramatically, based on the hard work of a, a few wonderful people who had a vision and didn't give up. And I think one of the things that you've said tonight is you need to be persistent in, especially here in Rapid City. We tend to be a little bit backwards sometimes, and we like to stay in the rut that we've carved out for ourselves, and when there's a change, some people just want to fight it. And for businesses, you have to try things over and over, and just stare failure in the face. But I, where I was going with this, is I wanted to thank you for becoming one of us. It, it was refreshing to me how familiar you are with our city, you know, not having to look at notes, you've, you've memorized the streets, you know the streets. If, if you ever need another job, I think you could be a taxi driver very easily in our town. But, and I say that tongue-in-cheek, I, I just want to thank you for the hard work you've done, and the things that you've placed on the table. You know, I, I don't know that you've given us something concrete because of all the compromise that needs to be made, but certainly, we've got a wonderful starting point that might need to be shaped ever so slightly. But Rapid City and Summer Nights are inextricably linked right now, and we see the good. But Rapid City and Summer Nights are inextricably linked right now, and we see the good, so we just need to make it even better. And I think with the help that you've given us, we're on our way. So thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. We'll now go to Councilwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the discussion and the comments by the public tonight.
Motion by Lewis, second by Scott.
Thank you. And then, I have a question. Mayor, or Roger, am I to understand that there'll be a full report in two weeks? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, yes, by the end of the month. And the reason, the reason I didn't have it done yet, and that's why you don't have things right here, is because even this morning, I went back down and met with Rich from Rapid City Transit and with, you know, Dan, and we're still, you know, trying to make sure, well, this is where we're going, and I mean, and even from this, you know, little things that, like, well, is it possible to alternate, you know, sites? Could you do that? You know, and so that's why I wanted to make sure, but our general recommendations are still pretty solid. But we wanted to make sure, just give that last little thing, but yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you. I just wanted that clarification, so it's been a good discussion, and I believe all of us up here have a lot to think about, and we're seeking more input from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is to acknowledge the report and discussion. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions for Mr. Brooks, if I may. When you're speaking and referring to the wayfinding signs, you mentioned that the current pedestrian wayfinding signs are, I understand that they're not meant for vehicular traffic to see them. Are they similar, what you're referring to, are they the ones similar to what they have in Seattle? Is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, well, first of all, wayfinding signs are, there's, wayfinding includes vehicular wayfinding. They should be decorative to fit your theme, your brand. They are vehicular, it includes pedestrian, it includes things like pole banners, includes your gateways. So wayfinding is a combination of things. But having that wayfinding system, if I'm staying at any one of your hotels, any one of them pretty much, good luck finding downtown. You have 4 million visitors a year, and you'd be hard pressed to tell any one of those how they could find downtown Rapid City. And by the way, only 17% of people have navigation systems, and navigation systems you use when you're looking for something specific. See what I mean? You type in, and, oh, I'm looking for this, and then you know what to type in. And so your wayfinding, and so, and pedestrian wayfinding is great. And by the way, wayfinding signage, it's 1-inch-tall letters for every 20 feet of viewing distance, never more than five items on a sign, so it has to be progressive. So if I'm out at Reptile Gardens, good luck finding downtown. See what I mean? And so you don't do that. And so, and by the way, if we use our navigation systems, it is always going to take you on the major thoroughfares, I-90, Mount Rushmore. Even if I'm coming down Mount Rushmore, Omaha, good luck finding where Main Street is. You have, you don't connect the dots. And like I said, wayfinding will increase retail sales service by average of 18%. And that's a study that was done across the United States. So wayfinding is a great way to tell people you even have a downtown.
Thank you. Kind of leads into, a little segue into my next question. Did you happen to see the Journey Museum sign?
I did, and by the way, wayfinding has to be more than going to the sign shop and putting up a sign.
Okay.
See what I mean? So it has to be, it has to be working all together. So I've seen a couple of little signs that will say, to the Journey Museum, go this way, but that's, I only see if I'm on a certain road, going a certain direction. I think I saw it on New York or one of those streets. But it's, and so your wayfinding is not consistent, it doesn't connect the dots all the way through. So wayfinding is a process. There has to be decision-making points. And by the way, for a visitor, you know, when I come in from the airport, so I get down from the airport, I come right down to Airport Road, you know what? As a visitor, right there, I have no clue which way Rapid City even is.
Wow.
You know what? It starts right there. And then you have to understand that if you're a visitor and you're coming from Airport Road into downtown, that 3, 4, 5 miles to me, even though I've been here many times and have started to get to know Rapid City, still seems like 30 miles. I have to tell you that even standing at the Hilton Garden Inn, you know, I come, I come, you know, around and get on I-90, I come the back way and up and over the freeway, my navigation saying, no, no, get on I-90, and then I start coming down LaSalle, and I keep going and going. You know what I did today? I turned right on, I guess I can't be your taxi driver. It's West, or North Street, or North Ave.
East North.
What's that?
East, East North Street.
East, yeah. And so what happened is, I turned because I wasn't all the way down to Omaha yet, but I thought, man, and you come to that intersection off LaSalle, there's not even a street name on that intersection. Lacrosse, I'm sorry, Lacrosse and, and East Nor, North, yeah. At that intersection, there's not one single thing. So I thought, maybe this is Omaha. So, this is the thing about wayfinding. And think about where all your, heck, if I'm over playing at, what is it, Pirate's Bay, the little mini golf course, try to find downtown from there. Pirate's Cove. Thank you. You know what I mean?
I do.
Even though it's a few blocks away. And so it's really something you do, and I think that would far offset any losses people get on a Thursday evening, 13, you know, for those 2 or 3 hours, 13 days of the year. So.
Mr. Brooks, you mentioned something about the staying open later in the evenings and so on like that. Was there any comparisons in your conversations, and I know you weren't directed to do this, but was there any comparisons with, like, for example, Christmas shopping? I'm assuming that about downtown businesses stay open later during the Christmas season and try to draw on that. So was there a spillover conversation?
There is, but generally, but like I said, and this was done in several studies, about 70% of all consumer spending takes place after 6:00 PM. This is why malls stay open later. And that is not just in the Christmas season, that's year-round. And remember, that's bricks and mortar spending, not online spending. But 70% takes place after 6:00 PM. And that's just because we're gravitating to that. I mean, by the way, if we're working till 5:00, and you're closed at 6:00, I mean, you're losing business. And, and, and so I think that's, it's not just during Christmas season, but for downtown, so I say, start on Friday. Start, you could do it, because you have Summer Nights, you start on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays. And then go ahead and close early. If you're going to close early with a one night, do it on Sunday, but start with that. I don't think that a downtown needs to just start 7 days a week tomorrow, because you're right. We actually did, I did a whole, we did a whole study on doing shared worker programs for small mom-and-pop shops, how you can do, so there's ways to work that for the proprietors. Well, jeez, if I open at 10:00, I got to go home and fix kids, you know, how do I do that if I want to stay open later? And so there's also answers to that, you know, but, but we are moving to the later evenings. And the future of downtowns across America and in Canada, we're a baby country. We built our culture on the automobiles. For the first time ever, if you want young people back in Rapid City, you need to start thinking about pedestrian areas, wider sidewalks, sidewalk cafes, bike lanes, all of those kinds of things. We are moving that way. And, and you should be one of those leading communities. You started the process with Main Street Square, that central gathering place.
Again, in another area that I know you weren't charged with, but did you get some spillover conversation about Mount Rushmore Road? Just a little bit of background for the folks that don't know about this, is that there is a group of businesspeople that are anticipating the shutdown of Mount Rushmore Road in different phases. But what they're doing is coming up with a road construction packet that they're going to be handing out to the businesses, how to survive that corridor when that gets shut down. So I was wondering if you'd heard anything about that and maybe helped, we could probably help out the businesses that are struggling on Thursday evenings.
Yes, and I did hear lots about it. I have not seen the plans, I guess they're still under, be it working on the plans of how that's going to happen, but I did hear a lot about how you're doing that. And we've worked with many communities. Gatlinburg, Tennessee hosts 13 million visitors a year because they're right next to Great Smoky Mountains National Park. They shut down their Main Street during the peak season to put all the power underground. How do you get through that? And we've had a lot of experience with that. And that's where you do even temporary wayfinding and things like that to make it easier for people as they reroute that. You know, I've even worked in cities where doing things like that help people go through downtown, and all of a sudden they go, wow, where did this come from?
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. That's all my questions, and I appreciate your ideas, especially the concept about, and for all the hard work you were doing on this project, I thank you very much for that and all the input, and especially the concept that I need to take a further look at is, when we do the barricades, you suggested a different kind of signage on there, and I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Richie. We'll now go to Councilman Charity Doyle.
Thank you. I want to address one thing Richie asked, if I may. I did have one person call me, Richie, who really had never gone downtown until Summer Nights started, and says that she did, because she was down there every week, did all of her Christmas shopping, got it done early, and now that's where she goes to shop. And having been here for 35 years, she never set foot in downtown because there was no incentive to do so. So I thought that was an interesting story. One thing I do want to add, though, a couple of years ago, I went down and polled, went into every business downtown, and it was more like 50/50 for and against. So your numbers shook out a little bit different. I'm glad Mr., was it Josh Pratt clarified? And I think it was closer in line to what you said. So we do, it's not making angry a small group of people or a third, it's, you know, it's going to be half the people, no matter which way we slice it. But then your comments on being kind of fresh eyes coming back into Rapid City, whereas I was born here, so I, everything, you know, I know where everything is, explains a lot because I thought my 18-year-old daughter was just extremely directionally challenged, and it turns out we're missing some street signs. You took some notes, right? All right, so we'll be getting that addressed. Thank you.
A couple of things is, one of my favorite Facebook posts, and I use Rapids, I promote Rapid City everywhere I go, because I speak at about 100 events a year. And one of my favorite Facebook posts was a person who posted a picture of downtown and put these very words in it. I've said it so many times, I haven't memorized. "I grew up in Rapid City and was never as cool as it is now." If that doesn't make a statement, I don't know what does. That's number one. I think that, yeah, what I did with the survey is, by the way, I didn't even know about the survey till this afternoon. So what I did is I just added up all the ones on Main Street, all the positives, and I didn't go by block.